I'll call this meeting to work. Would you join me in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Captain, would you please do roll call?
Sure, Mayor McGowan. Matthew Lund.
Present.
John Glondo.
Here.
Ruston Weaver.
Here.
Stephen Harper. Mickey Holtz.
Here.
Beth Williams. And Ken Ratliff.
Does seem odd that we're here face to face.
No, this is wonderful.
Don't breathe too much. Yes. About approval of the meeting agenda?
We approve the meeting agenda.
Move to second it to approve the meeting agenda. Questions on the motion? You're not all in favor with I? I oppose. Not oppose the approval. I don't have any announcements or appointments at this time. So go to the consent agenda.
Second.
Move to second it to... Oh, questions. Second it to accept questions on the motion.
Well, it's not a... It's a couple of things in the consent agenda. I'm... If Mike was here, I'd ask him, but I guess Mr. May ask you. The Public Works did some work for Pinelock Sun on their utilities. Question is, did we... Did the city bill Pinelock Sun?
Well, we worked on their utilities.
Yeah. Okay.
We have a... We have a...
I know we have the rates, yeah, yeah, so.
A wheel is definitely...
Yeah. But I think it's great that we can have mail like that. Just wanted to make sure on that.
Yes.
The other thing, uh... In the payment vouchers, I just... Ben, are you available? Ben Anan?
Yes, I can hear you, council member.
Okay. We have a payment to the Department of Commerce for the Public Works Trust Fund Loan First Street... Sir, or First Street payment. Can you shed a little light on the process of... The finance part of that? Or do I need to talk to our treasurer?
The First Street Stormwater Project, is that what you're referencing?
I believe, Ben, I believe it's the... There's one... There's one of five payments for a hundred and what? Thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six thousand eight sixty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, yeah.
And he's wondering what... Which one was that for? Was that the seven-hundred thousand for the design of first phase three?
Rob, I can hear you real well, but Councilmember Aliff is coming through really fuzzy. Can you repeat his question, Rob?
Right, so there was... We just made a payment of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and some change. One of five, and he's wondering what that one is for. It was for, I believe, phase three. Is that the seven-hundred thousand dollar loan? Or was it a grant?
It was a five-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar loan, Public Works Trust Fund.
Yes, okay. So that's all loan. There's no... There's no forgiveness on that, or...
Yeah, if you can... If you construct it within the first five years, then they'll stretch it out to a twenty-year note. But it is a loan. The balance of that to the seven-hundred thousand that you mentioned was an STBG... Surface Transportation Block Grant, grant through the Federal Highways Program. So a portion of the project was a grant, but predominantly loaned through the Public Works Board of Trust Fund Program.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
Does that make sense, Ken?
Yeah, yeah, a little muddy, but just so we've got good eyes on it, Ben, then we...
Okay.
I'm happy with that.
Not all in favor of I? I. Oppose? None? Consent agenda approved. Officer reports. My city administrator, Rob Holden. Rob, Rob.
Okay, and Mayor, can you make sure you speak in the... Speak in your little speaker there, please.
How about that? I moved a little bit closer and...
Yeah, move it closer, yeah. Like, right up to your mouth, that would be just fine. But anyways, I'll talk for a little bit. Thank you today, Honorable Mayor, City Council. So I just have a couple of things to report on. If you guys remember the award that Robin, our treasurer, got, and she's going back to... Back east somewhere to the conference and to accept the award. Well, they were offering a scholarship of five-hundred dollars. And she applied for it, and she got it. She just wanted me to make sure the council knew that, you know, because she kind of feels guilty about, you know, going and... And, you know, going way back east to this conference. And so she got a five-hundred-dollar grant. So that one's done.
We are thrilled.
Pardon?
We are thrilled...
Thrilled.
To honor her.
Yes, I told her that, too, and I'll tell her again. But just know that there's five hundred bucks that we got. Then the only other thing I want to report on is... So last year, the 2020, we spent over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of federal money. And so we are going to have a audit. It's just going to be a financial audit. It's going to start June first. And it's all going to be online and emails. And we've already got four Zoom meetings set up. Robin and I have four Zoom meetings starting June first. And I believe even the mayor talked to them today. But so that's coming out. They're going to be auditing us on 2019 and 2020. So... That's all my report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay, Rob?
Yeah, that's a lot better.
That's from our city planner, Lucy Temple.
Hi, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We are continuing to receive permit applications of various types, large and very... Very large and some small ones. And we still have... We had several pre-application meetings already this year, and all of those are kind of following up. They're not going dormant. And so it's becoming really difficult to keep up with all the calls, emails, inquiries, permit applications, and processing. It's... The mayor said earlier, it's not raining, it's pouring. And I second that. I was asked to report on one grant. We did receive a six-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen-dollar grant from the Washington State Department of Transportation. It's a regional mobility grant. And that... Oh, thank you very much. Okay, so on your screen, you see the site plan. This is located Kitty Corner to City Hall to the southwest, just south of the Polaris Apartments on Railroad and Oaks Avenue. It's currently being used as a city parking lot. And the grant through DOT, the Regional Mobility Grant, will allow it to be developed into a formal park-and-ride facility. That would include landscaping, paving, landscaping, a bus stop, like, for Hope Source, an actual bus shelter on railroad. It includes paving, repaving the corners. And if you can see on the north part of that, you can see two crosswalks. And right now, we have a crosswalk that's not shown, that's along the southern portion of that intersection... From the parking lot over to the gravel lot. But this would allow ADA ramps and a bulb out on the south side of the Polaris parking stalls, which will improve visibility for pedestrians and vehicles will be able to pull out a little farther. That intersection is really sketchy, and we have a lot of accidents there, a lot of near misses. So it's a really great grant. And oh, it also includes electric vehicle charging stations as well. So the grant match, and I'm glad Ben is on the phone. The grant match is a hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, the total project amount coming to seven-hundred-and-ninety-one-seventy... Seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars. And I was asked to determine what that match was. And it was so long ago that we applied for the grant that with all the meetings and everything I had today, I was not able to locate how we were planning on doing that match. But I do recall conversations about the city would not be footing that entire match. And I know our team is really good at strategizing, matching other grants for grants. And so maybe I can put Ben on the spot here. He probably already knows that I was going to ask him this. But Ben, could you touch on that match amount?
I thought you might be putting me on the spot. Now, if I recall, it was about a year ago that we talked through this. But at the time, we had strategized on how best to meet that match requirement. And at the time, we discussed the value of the land. And so with the city's ongoing lease of this property, which I believe is thirty-five-hundred dollars a year, that credit for a twenty-five-year duration, I believe it's eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars. I have to get a calculator out. But anyway, that would be the city's match going towards this grant. And so that would leave a balance of approximately seventy-thousand dollars out of pocket for the project in total.
Yeah. And then I spoke with Jordan Hancock from HLA as well. And she seems to think that there is a part to that where we can ask for a small grant from PSE for the electric vehicle charging stations to alleviate some of the costs of that component. So we'll look into that. But we don't have to know that today because the formal award would not come until sometime in June. And then we would have two years to get the project done. But I do believe that HLA could be coming to us with a task order soon so that we can get this going. I think the money would be released in July for that. So we'll bring back another conversation, especially if anybody has any questions about that. But that's the end of my staff report.
Okay, thank you. My like... My point out on that drawing, the bulb out on that southeast corner will really make a big difference. Really carefully, the road is real narrow where it crosses the railroad, but it's much wider than the city street. And so that funnel effect makes it very difficult to get it.
Yeah.
And you're aware of that?
Yeah, a lot, yeah, I watch that.
Yes.
Quite a bit. Cars down, slow down, boy, you gotta...
So we'll be able to... Down there, Stephen?
So my question, you said that we have a lease on the land. What's the duration of that lease?
Well, I believe it's thirty-five years.
Okay, so I guess my question is, whenever... Thirty-five years from today or thirty-five years from whatever date it started?
Well, it only started like a couple of years ago.
Yeah, no, just a good...
Oh, well, I'll find out, I know.
The only concern is that we improve an area, and we put, you know, fixtures into it. And then it becomes, you know, there comes a point where we vacate the land. And then, you know, those improvements go, you know...
So, well, actually, usually, before you can buy a railroad property, they require you to lease it for X amount of time. And then after you've done that, then the next option is to actually buy.
So there's the potential that the city would be able to acquire it.
Oh, yes. Yes. And that's how it's worked before. Yeah.
Ultimately, it's not... It's not the citizens of Cleland's money going to approve it directly. But it is a consideration that we're improving a piece of land. Want to make sure that, I mean, for thirty-five years, that's probably the lifespan of the pavement. But it was shorter.
Okay. Let's see now. Greg Dorn, are you there? I don't know, is Greg on line? Yeah, you know what? You know, Mayor, he did have that other meeting that started... So we might have... He might come on later. All right. I don't see him.
That we amend the agenda to allow him to be placed wherever it might be.
There's a second. Stephen is asking the council if it would be permissible to have Greg Dorn enter into the agenda later. All those in favor with I?
I.
Okay, thanks for that. I know that, please, Stephen, that much, the big thing he's pretty excited about is to getting really close to getting the emergency generator up and running. And that is in the works right now. And our city superintendent is off and gone. Okay, citizen comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Come on up and there's the microphone and tell us your name and address and...
Give you a copy of something.
Yeah, you can.
I'm just going to be reading from this, so you won't have to remember.
It's a good strategy. We usually... Well, we take this and give it to the city clerk who puts it in the rest.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name's Larry Stoffer. My address is two six six one Lower P O Point. I'm not actually certain this is right form, but you can tell me about that. I've talked to the county and haven't got clarity, so I ask you folks. This has to do with development expense. So I'm interested in whether or not the city has a mechanism in place to address new development impacts to non-city infrastructure as a means of eliminating the need to increase tax rates to citizens of the upper county. So in short, the city has the ability to negotiate impact fees and demand other offsetting dollars to cover expenses associated with new development that impacts the city directly. However, it's my understanding that no impact fee agreements exist between the city of Cleland, Kettattas County, the hospital district, or the school district. I'm not... I'm not certain of that, but that's my understanding. Certain types of development, such as the proposed Sun Communities Forty-Sixth Degree North Plan, consist of an ownership design, developer-owned, rather than these simple property and lot ownership, that will likely make the current tax structure impossible to cover the direct expense of adding the quantity of people anticipated. So my question to the mayor and the city council is, what can the city do to ensure that new development within city limits and approved by the city is required to pay all costs for new non-city infrastructure associated with proposed development, including required county road improvements and interchanges, new healthcare facilities, doctors, nurses, and staff, and new school classrooms, teacher, and staff? Again, I've talked to the county about it. Oftentimes, there will be impact fees that are negotiated within, you know, between cities and counties. But that's not the structure here. And so when you, as a city councilor of the Planning Department, agree on a development and negotiate a development agreement, what opportunity does the city have to ensure in that agreement that somehow the other expenses develop?
It's called the conditions of... And at some point after the SCIS is all done and what the impacts are, how those impacts, what you're talking about, are negotiated and the city will negotiate for those.
Okay, so you will negotiate for those impact fees that affect the county and other, the hospital district, too, and the school district?
Well, yeah, we do make sure that those things are covered, for sure.
Very well, that's what I wanted to hear. And Stephen?
I have a question, and I think it will... At present, we have no developer agreement with Sun Communities.
Right.
So there's a lot of... There's a lot of press saying this is happening and this is happening. And it's a lot of grandstanding. At present, we have a developer agreement with Sun Cadia. And it has conditions of at certain points, you build this many lots, you do this. Roughly eleven hundred stick-built private-lone lots is how that is... That's the agreement that has been agreed to by a previous council. No other agreement is in place. And so any developer agreement would come before the public. And so, and it would happen in this room. Or it would happen in front of this council. There's a lot of confusion, I believe, with the public that things are happening. There's all kinds of proposals. Everybody is at liberty to propose and to publicize their hopes, dreams, et cetera. It's not finalized until this council places an improvement on a developer agreement. And the developer agreement is generally that mechanism to call out those impacts. There are some... There are at times other things that, like you said, the other entities can do. But the city typically, historically, has called out those impacts.
So thank you for that. I'm familiar with all the documentation. Thing that I get my hands on, including every document you have here, see. But so in talking with the state, though, and the county, the answer to this, which you've made clear, and I'm glad to hear it, they were unclear as it relates to, again, expenses with respect to roads, interchanges, the school, and all of that. But so long as you guys have, you know, the authority internally to ensure that those items are covered, then great. So keep a good eye on it. I will.
Comments are welcome.
Any other comments, you know, citizen comments? Anybody else? Oh, well, how about online? I forget about our other ones. Rob, is there anybody in the waiting room or anybody online? Nobody's... Nobody's in the waiting room. They're all here, so... Nobody's raising their hand. All right, well, sometimes it's good to make a little bit of delay here, so... Yeah. We're going to move on then. So we're down to public appearances. And there's... First, we're going to hear from the Chamber of Commerce and Madison Ford. It's got a report for us.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Just want to make sure you can see my screen here first. So today, I'll be going over Discover Cleland and our tourism progress in the month of April. Some of our focuses in April, as far as the digital marketing component of what we do, is that we develop a historical timeline, which has been fact-checked by several local sources here on Cleland's history and South Cleland as well. That kind of breaks down a lot of our historical landmarks and the times when important events happen so that travelers can learn more about Cleland and South Cleland and feel more connected to the area, too, while they're reading about it. We developed a article on top places to experience outdoor recreation, top excursions, a guide to breakfast and brunch in Cleland, where to go. We also put together a interview with Charlene, who helps manage the Carpenter House, and interviewed her on what's happening with Carpenter House, the reopening, and what travelers can expect. We also just share a lot of updates for travelers as far as making their trip earlier, easier, and encourage them to travel over here earlier, including new tables at Hanson Ponds, preferred parking, so talked with Mike, he said the city lot over here on Oaks and Railroad is actually one of the best places for travelers to park if they're going to meet up with another person, head out to a trailhead. And it helps prevent a lot of those parking issues on site, as well as outdoor patios to enjoy. And these are some of the featured businesses that we featured in April and that help us do what we do. And then there's an ad, Trout and About is an ad that we feature to provide more information for folks that are looking to recreate here. And then below that is a photo of Von. We try to stop in at all of the new businesses in town that are in any way tourism-related or would help elevate a tourist experience while they're here. As far as the numbers, we had thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-eight users on Discover Cleland in April. Out of that, organic users were over two thousand, and we had over twenty-two thousand page views. Our top pages, so it can kind of indicate what folks are interested in, what they're going to our website for, is top five picks in Cleland, Cleland Leisure Travel Guide, so business and leisure. If you're traveling through Cleland for this trip or a corporate retreat, how can you have fun while you're here? Fun in the snow in Cleland was popular in April, probably the last month that we'll see that being one of the top searched terms. Attractions, as well as our events page. And then to the left, you can see organic keywords that folks looked up organically to find this. And then paid to the right, so what are advertising campaign helps target. And you can see they're very similar. People are starting to recreate and get outdoors, and this is a good indication of that. And then lastly, other projects, what we were up to in April. We started having serious discussions about a wedding show, which we were hoping to do this summer, but it's looking like it'll make more sense for the first quarter of 2022. And how we can implement working with partners both downtown and around Cleland and up at Sun Cadia to bring together local vendors, photographers, florists, and anything wedding-related, providing information and resources for folks to choose our area. I've also been asking questions to hotels every month in Cleland about business travel, event travel, what they're seeing on their side that we don't see from the Star Record to help give a more holistic view of how hotels are being utilized in Cleland and what they expect from us to how we can help. And lastly, planning for our Pioneer Parade. It's been a unique year for events once again. And we have submitted applications for both the Pioneer Parade on Saturday, July third, which we're really happy and excited to potentially see from P O to Pennsylvania instead of having to have it on railroad or do it reverse style or in a video format like we had to last year. And the Independence Day Celebration, lastly, we submit an application for that, which we are having, hoping to have on July fourth over here in Y Park. And this would be a full family event from 2:00 PM into the nighttime when fireworks happen with live entertainment, a beer garden, vendors with a lot of local craft people, face painters, nonprofits, a bounce house. You want to have it be really engaging for the whole family and very kid-friendly. So we are happy to introduce that as a potential first-time event here in Cleland, just to provide that gap between the Pioneer Parade on Saturday and the firework show, which we always do on the Fourth of July. Give folks something to do and a way to celebrate. And that is all that I have for you guys this time around. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
We started putting metrics on some of the visitor center kind of stuff, like visitors in the month and any other metrics that would be useful, I'm just curious.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. Any other questions?
Is all this stuff based on potential that we're opening the state, not your area?
Well, the Department of Transportation won't allow anything in phase three. So if things get pushed back, and we do have safety plans and kind of plan the options, we could shift the parade down to railroad. It might take a little flexibility with the council. And we're hoping that we can continue to have it on the four with the safety plan we have in place traditionally. But there is a tiny chance that if that's not our plan, it's just shifted down to railroad. But there is a tiny chance that if that's not our plan, it's just shifted down to railroad. And if there's any other feedback or if you guys want to do something different, just let me know and we can look into that too.
There's nothing prohibiting the outdoor activities. It's just that the DOT doesn't want to give us, right, they go ahead on.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions for Madison?
Thank you so much.
So do we have, uh, Debbie Bogart online? Was she seated?
Actually, ma- uh, Mayor, uh, she did call earlier and didn't know if she could make it or not. That's why she gave you the, uh, the printout that you, uh, that you had there on the counter for you. So it looks like she's not on the line.
Okay. And that, what he's speaking about is the, this sheet right here. It should have been right on the table. It was, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Well, okay. We'll move on from there. So, uh, uh, next, we're gonna have, uh, we have a, a public hearing required here. And it's, uh, concerns the, the CDVG, uh, grant applicant. They asked Ben to give us an introduction to that, and then we'll open it for a public comment. What do you, are you there, Ben?
I am. Great, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Council, appreciate the opportunity to discuss this, uh, funding opportunity. Uh, three weeks ago, we discussed the CDVG program and kind of the ins and outs of the program. We'll just do a real quick brief on that again. Uh, each year, there's a competitive call for projects through the Community Development Block Grant Program. There's, uh, twelve million dollars available statewide for planning and construction of public infrastructure, uh, community facilities. And each agency is eligible to go after nine hundred thousand dollars of that twelve million dollar pot. Uh, there are three national objectives that need to be met with, with projects. Uh, any of the three can be met, but at least one has to be met with each project application. And that it principally benefits low and income people, aids in prevention or elimination of slums or blight. And then the third is addresses imminent threat to public health or safety. And that third one is really what the Stafford Avenue Corridor Improvement Project is going after. And so three weeks ago, we discussed the Stafford Avenue Project. Essentially, there's two components to it. There's a water component and a street component. The existing twelve-inch water main that serves both the Stafford Avenue Corridor, but, but the entirety of the, the pressured one, or pressures on one within the city, which all, is all of the city limits to the east of the Stafford Corridor. Uh, this is an antiquated pipeline. It's, it's a seventy-year-old asbestos cement line. Uh, there have been breaks throughout the city on AC lines. Fortunately, there hasn't been a break on this one yet, but two years ago, there was down at the intersection of Stafford and Second, where this distribution main ties into the water system. And so it is critical, uh, water system component to get replaced. Uh, the second part of it is, is the street corridor for Stafford Avenue. Uh, currently, the grade to get up to the Stafford Avenue Corridor, the Seven Hill Neighborhood, it's, it's a thirteen to fourteen percent grade.
It hits fifteen. Yeah.
It was real fuzzy in there. Did, did somebody say something again?
Um, Ken, Ken was commenting that, uh, that it was a fifteen degree.
Oh, fifteen percent, okay. Even worse, yes. So thirteen, fourteen, fifteen percent. Uh, the International Fire Code standard is ten percent and the city standard is eleven percent. So definitely in excess of those standards. And as such, emergency services have a difficult time providing services to the Seven Hill Neighborhood. Uh, there is no bus service, and so certainly a deficiency. Um, especially with the steep slopes on the one side, with snow removal for public works, a lot of opportunities to repair that corridor. And so the city, uh, is going after an eight hundred thousand dollar CDVG grant. This is the, the public hearing for that grant application as a requirement for the program. Uh, with that, I, I'll give it back to the mayor to open up the public hearing with any questions or comments from the public.
Okay, thank you, Ben. And so at this time, I'll open a public hearing on applying for the CDVG, uh, application for Stafford Street Corner improvements. Is there anyone here that wishes to make comments on that? And maybe, uh, Rob, see if anybody raises their hand online.
Okay, I'm, I, I'm watching. I don't see anything, although it looks like William unmuted. I'm not sure if he wants to talk. Hey, William, did you want to talk? Uh, you unmuted yourself. I'm curious.
No, Rob, nothing here.
Okay, sorry. Just want to be sure. Thanks, buddy.
Okay, so there's, uh, no one wishing to comment here in the, the council chambers, uh, and it doesn't appear to anybody, uh, in the wind, in the wings there. Rob?
Nobody, nope.
Okay, being as there's no comment, I'll close the public hearing on the Stafford Street Corner. So Ben, uh, now we'll, uh, discuss it with the council. What is, what, do you wish to have some action or?
Uh, yeah. Thank you, Ben. This is excellent. Why don't we apply for nine hundred thousand dollars?
Rob, were you able to, I, for some reason.
Yep. He said that, why don't we, why don't we apply for the nine hundred thousand?
Good question, good question. So Rob and I actually had a, a pre-application conference with CDVG program staff. And, and they were, without saying the words, they were, they were very cautious about going for the full amount. Uh, that generally is, is looked down upon from the program staff. Not to say you can't, but, uh, it is a competitive program statewide with twelve million to go around. And so when we discuss the project, we generally use the eight hundred thousand dollar project amount, and, uh, there wasn't any exception taken there.
That's fine.
Um, so, Ben, what, what kind of action do we take now? And at all, or do we make, or what do you need from us?
Yeah, so there won't be any action items tonight. It'll be on the next agenda item, that grievance procedure. But in terms of the public hearing, it's just a requirement of the, the CDVG program to have a public hearing to discuss the application prior to submission.
Okay, so we've, uh, we've, uh, accomplished that, sounds.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're done with the public hearings and we'll go down to new business, so stay tuned, Ben. It looks like you're gonna discuss the grievance procedure with us for the CDVG grant application?
Yes, thank you. So the next item, the grievance procedure, another part of the CDVG program application is having an adopted grievance procedure specific to this project. Um, the identical grievance procedure was adopted three years ago for the First Street Stormwater Project, which was also a CDVG-funded project. Um, was, was a copy provided in the council packets, so, and if not, I can read the procedure to you.
I don't, I think you should read it.
Okay. Yeah, so it's, it's three, three simple items. The first is, submit complaints in writing to the designated official, being the city administrator, for resolution. A record of complaints and action taken will be maintained. A record of the complaints and action taken will be maintained. A decision by the designated official will be rendered within fifteen days. Then the second item is if the complaint cannot be resolved to your satisfaction by the designated official, the complaint will be heard and discussed by the governing elected body at an open public meeting. A written decision will be made within thirty working days. The decision of the governing body is final. And then the third item is a record of action taken on each complaint will be maintained as part of the records or minutes at each level of the grievance process. And that sums up the grievance procedure, which is essentially a template that the CDVG staff put out for agency use.
So Ben, and what kind of, uh, you know, when you say grievance, is it because, uh, they didn't like the way the sidewalk was built, or there was a labor dispute, or what constitutes grievance?
It, it can be anything, as the examples you mentioned, or, you know, I didn't have the opportunity to comment on the funding application or the project details. I mean, there can be a number of grievances filed, uh, to be honest, in twelve years and administering, I believe, nine CDVG projects for, for different agencies throughout both Kitataas and Yakima County. I have not seen one grievance filed. But there is the opportunity to file those grievances and procedures have to be put in place, um, for the agencies to go by. And so that's the purpose of this, this agenda item.
Liberating governing body would be the council.
Hmm, yes, yes. Um, so, do you need a motion to accept that grievance procedure?
Correct. The action would be a motion to adopt the grievance procedure.
Uh, so move to, uh, adopt the procedure. I'll start with it.
It's moved by Ken and seconded by Mickey Holtz to adopt a motion to adopt the grievance procedure. Questions on the motion?
I have a question, I guess, kind of on the previous thing. Where is the?
Well, I don't think the application has been submitted yet, has it, Ben?
Okay, I hear the question. For some reason, I'm having a very difficult time with the, with the council microphones. I can hear the mayor real well and Rob, but that's about the extent. So the, the application itself, was that the question?
Yes, where is it, or have we, we haven't made it yet, or, yeah.
It's, it's, it's in process currently. Yeah, the due date is June second. It is in process. Uh, there's been quite a few hours on it recently to, to hit that June second deadline.
Yeah, so I guess my question goes back to, it's not in our packet, but we just had a public hearing for the public to comment on the application, but I haven't seen it. I understand this is sort of a, this is sort of a, you know, peremptory detail or whatever, but, but we had a public hearing on an application that I haven't seen. And so I'm just wondering, do we expect the public to comment on the application? And did they see, maybe I'm confused.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, it's, it's, it's a public hearing for the CDVG program and not the actual application itself, because it is in process. You have to have the public hearing prior to submitting the application. And so, I suppose, um, you know, in a perfect world, you could develop the application, have it available for public input, but there's, there's a three-month period between when the application is, is put forth for uh, agencies to prepare versus when it is due. So there's not a lot of time there, but the, the public hearing is primarily to discuss the CDVG program details, the goals of the program. Uh, the application itself is in process. There was a summary, basically an abstract. It was several paragraphs that was provided to the city. And I believe it was, it was published on the, uh, window of City Hall for folks to, to look at, as well as on the webpage.
Okay, that, that, that was my confusion. I guess the item said CDVG application, not program, and so that was where my confusion was. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry about the confusion there.
That's a good, good question. So any other?
Good question.
On the motion? It's not all in favor with I? Both. And now, uh, we're going down to Resolution, uh, twenty, twenty-one, zero, and zero. And that's amending the, uh, twenty twenty-one cemetery rates. Uh, and Rob, you're gonna walk us through that?
Yeah, I can start you out, uh, here, Mayor and, and City Council. Uh, we did have a, we held a, um, a cemetery committee meeting. Uh, council member, uh, Williams was the only one that showed up, but, you know, we went out to the cemetery, we looked around, we talked about the rates. In your packet, you should have seen the, um, the five-year, uh, five-year budget, uh, for the cemetery, how it loses money every single year. And, um, so we're proposing to, uh, essentially, uh, basically double the rates, uh, that we're, not only is it losing money, but we also need to put more money into the, to the cemetery. There's not, a, a full irrigation system needs to be put out there. And whatnot. Although, uh, council member, uh, Williams, do you, can you, uh, elaborate on this as well? And speak into the microphone, please.
Basically, uh, though we've been raising the rates every year, uh, we're still, we remain like twenty thousand dollars in debt. So we just need to get to the point where we're breaking even, so keeping us twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, it's a little light, but.
Sorry. So I know Stephen has a comment and, um, and go ahead, and then I have something I want to mention.
I am in support of the increase as it's been presented. I reviewed it. Uh, the other mitigating factors, even at the rates that we are proposing, um, we're still very much competitive with many other municipalities and other private, uh, intern services. So, um, we almost have to worry sometimes as a committee if we're encouraging people that could, you know, kind of go either way. Or we could get, you know, we could get buried here, or we could get buried there. Oh, it's cheaper there. And so the idea is not necessarily to discourage people from interning locally, um, but we want to make sure that, uh, that we're more on the competitive line, and again, that we're flush. And I think this is one of the greatest strides that we'll make. There's also some creative ideas that Kathy's brought, um, concerning some, uh, private fixtures, et cetera, that would also be able to bring us, um, flush on a yearly basis, but also allow us to be able to develop portions as we project the increase, uh, demand on the property. So, um, we don't, once we do this, I think we're close to being caught up to where we're not gonna have to do dramatic increases in the future. We'll just go with our simple.
And the other, if you'll remember, uh, the pipe display you had at the previous meeting, one of those pieces of pipe was, uh, the, about as the thinnest, uh, black plastic pipe you can get was used for the irrigation system in the cemetery. And so they're always, uh, out there fixing leaks and stuff and, uh.
It's actually conduit, wasn't it?
Or it's a waste drain, it's a waste drain. Yeah, so it's like, you know, for your kitchen sink, drain, pipe. Any case, uh, that's, we're working on, uh, the funding for that, to be able to replace that source. I just thought I'd add that to it. Uh, any other questions on the proposal, Ben?
So my, my reading was right. This is the second time this year we're raising cemetery rates. The other one's really hard to read. But, so this was like the first thing we did this year was raise the cemetery rates. And then we're doing it again. We're almost doubling it five months later. Okay. Want to make sure I was reading this right?
Actually, on, on the back side is the same interface, more readable on here.
Yeah, I, it's just the name of the, when it was passed.
The explanation not to make an excuse is, uh, we didn't, there are, we, we've always thought about making a big jump. It's just now, I guess.
The nerve has been tested.
It's just honestly, that is the, that is the truth answer, um, is that it's not a very popular thing to raise rates. But again, it's not going, it's not on every single person. Unfortunately, it is a hard time when somebody dies. You know, exactly how, you know, not everybody is prepared for that. Uh, so we've tried to shield them, but we can't allow the, allow the, um, cemetery to go, you know, basically to draw twenty to thirty grand every year for the general fund. So it has to be, it has to go on to the vaccine. And, and, uh, good, again, we don't see dramatic increases. Uh, we're not turning it into like a tourist attraction.
But it is a tourist attraction.
It is, but what I'm saying is, that's not the, that's not the intent of these increased rates.
Yeah.
Uh, if, if, if things were to go around, and it were to, you know, somehow be able to get private funding and grants, et cetera, then we could always revisit these rates and bring them down.
Yeah.
You know, that's definitely always considerable, and I, I would be in favor of it if we could find another funding source. But for the things that I've been on council, I believe, it's just, you know, we've tried other things, um, but they never, there always seems to be some kind of catch where they're just not usable for a publicly owned cemetery.
But this still won't.
No, this, no, I think we're gonna be pretty, coming pretty close. Yeah, we'll be coming pretty close to, to even, and especially if we have increased the turnout, then we should easily, uh, do that.
Increase the turnout.
But with the, with the current worldwide pandemic and, uh, population influx from, uh, the west side, I, I don't think we'll have a hard time, um, seeing that increase.
With the unstable revenue source based on the five-year projections here, but.
Yeah, so, so I, my comment is that they're really dying to get. Yeah, so I, so I, my comment is that they're really dying to get in.
I'm trying to be there someday.
Uh, the other thing, though, I want to point out in front of the city, though, it is a real important cultural aspect, you know, it's it's, you know, that it's, there's a lot of history there, and we do treasure that, and it's important that we're able to keep it up. And at the same time, we do, we have to be as fair as we can, but we still need to charge.
So in the interest of uh, of the public that is hearing about these increased rates uh, for the first time, I would like to ask that we uh, table uh, any movement on this for that we pick up at the next meeting, that gives somebody their proper amount of time, should they decide, hey, I'd like to buy at the old rates, would they at least have, they they have a fixed amount of time? Uh, and so that's what I'm asking, moving that we table this until the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Put it on the gen.
I want to thank, thank to Beth and and Stephen, the committee for their work. Yeah, and
Yeah.
This is being responsible.
So, um.
Hey, you got two weeks?
Okay, so now the next uh, two ordinances, uh, we're putting on hold, uh, because we're going to uh. Mayor, there's actually one other one before that.
Oh, 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 yeah, I'm in a hurry, I guess, sorry. Thank you for that, uh, and this is a, I don't, this is a release the retainage of thirteen thousand twenty-eight dollars eighty-seven cents to Boss Austin Smith for uh, the SR nine oh three in Stafford sidewalk project. So Rob, you wanted to explain that to us?
Yeah. Sorry, but there's, the sun's coming right in here, I gotta put my glasses on, it's just so bright, um. Okay, so thi- this is a project we we cleared, was done quite a while, quite a while ago, um, uh, at the Stafford intersection, uh, but it took a while for the Employment Security Department, L and I, to get all of their um, okays to say, yep, you're okay to release the retainage, so so I'm just asking the council if they could uh, approve the resolution um, to release, or it's not a resolution, just to approve to release the retainage.
Right, on our email from uh, Kathy, it's just a housekeeping item, it's been accepted as complete, and this is something of formality to release the final payment, so I make a motion that we release the retainage for uh, uh, Boss Austin Smith, the project SR nine oh three in Stafford sidewalk.
Okay, all right, move the seconded to uh, move the release of the retainage.
And it's in the amount of thirteen thousand zero twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Amount, questions on the motion? Bring that, all those in favor with I? Opposed? There's none opposed, so the release of the retainage is. So now the ordinance is on a critical area and shoreline that we were gonna review tonight. We're uh, we're putting on hold, Gary, were you gonna talk about that, or yeah? Okay.
Yeah.
And Lucy will have, uh, cause we're gonna, we're gonna uh, uh, kind of talk about the best available science.
I think Lucy would probably want to start it.
Okay.
Thank you, um, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council and um, and Commissioner Burnt. The Planning Commission staff and consultants that were hired to do the Shoreline Master Program and Critical Areas Ordinance Updates um, back last summer, we've been working on this um, since last summer. And we provided the council with the information ahead of the last meeting, which I think was the May tenth meeting, so they could have plenty of time to look over the materials. Um, the Planning Commission did do their due diligence in reviewing and holding the appropriate public meetings. And so what we'd like to do tonight is, we understand that there are some comments, uh, questions that may be ongoing discussion, but since our consultant is here, and since Commissioner Burton is here, we would like to present the information to you and then follow it up with um, the discussion, if you so choose. The order of things would be to start, um, rather than to talk about both ordinances as one, because they are not, they are actually very separate, under separate state laws, we just put the, we 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 went down a parallel paths at the same time, because they do intersect, um, you know, out in nature, in the critical areas and the shoreline. And as such, we needed those regulations to align. But since they are separate and separate agenda items, we'd like to talk about them separately. One correction I'd like to make to the agenda, um, we did put them on in order of the ordinance number, which corresponds with their placement in the city code, and the Critical Areas Ordinance, which is the first up, um, it is actually Clealum Municipal Code eighteen oh one, rather than eighteen oh three, um, just to make a quick correction if anybody cared about that. So I would like to hand that over to Commissioner Burton, and then followed up by a presentation from our consultant, so we know a little bit more, hopefully a lot more, about the Critical Areas Ordinance update and process that we went through to get where we are now.
Thank you, so, uh, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, uh, speaking for the Planning Commission, I keep on blast ball during the COVID and have been scrambling to catch up in some of the work that is basically either due or overdue to report to the state. The city has had retained uh, a consultant who will speak here shortly, and also have solicited input on the Critical Areas Ordinance as well as the shoreline management update. Uh, I'd like to maybe talk to the shoreline management first, because that one is the one that kind of has the clearest route or consideration. Voted, and I have a transmitted letter to you on that, as well as our local Critical Areas. The shoreline management for the city of Clealum, if you stop and think for a minute, you don't have, our city does not have a large amount of shoreline waters in the city, you have a little piece of the Clealum River up by Bullfrog, you have both sides of the river from the ballpark down to Fireman's Park, and then there is one side of the Akama River to the city limits down on Lincoln Stadium. That's the total amount of shorelines, there's not a significant change in that. I think, um, very comfortably, that's something that, and consultants will probably speak to that, that there's not significant change to, the Critical Areas Ordinance is much more complex. And it, it has uh, some requirements that I have not encountered. And so I may have been as much of the part of the problem as the solution, but I will turn it over, Lucy, to uh, Josh or Brittany, however you'd like to do that, and then I, I think I'll talk a little bit afterward when it's done.
Okay, Commissioner Burton, to be clear, you have changed the order of the agenda to talk about the shoreline master program first.
No, no. Okay, that's, yes, I did that.
Okay, that's okay, that's, well, I can't speak for the ca- council, is that okay?
I would, we make the change.
Yes.
It's fine, it's fine.
And so with that, um, I would like to introduce Brittany Port and um, and Josh also from uh, HBL, they're the consultants that have been helping us throughout this process, they are on the call and um, and I believe they, I I'm, they might want to share this screen, um, Brittany and Josh?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
So Rob, if you could give them permission?
It should be coming to you now, are you okay?
Yes, perfect, okay.
Josh, do you need to share your screen as well, or?
Once Brittany is done, yes.
Gotcha.
For the CAO.
Okay.
Okay. Um, thank you, um, Mayor and City Council members, as well as um, uh, Planning Commissioner, uh, this will be, I think, a quicker um, presentation for you, I just want to give a uh, really quick um, kind of background of the shoreline uh, master program update, the Shoreline Management Act, and kind of what, you know, procedurally the city is obligated to to be doing when it comes to reviewing and uh, amending its shoreline master program. Um, so my name is Brittany Port, I'm a land use planner and project manager at AHBL, we are a uh, um, city planning, uh, civil engineering, landscape architecture, structural engineering consulting firm. Um, and I have experience with uh, I, both comprehensive and periodic um, reviews of shoreline master programs, I've done comprehensive updates in Grace Harbor County and Lewis County, and I've done periodic updates um, for some communities um, within uh, the Puget Sound area. And so I'm familiar with all of the regulations and requirements that go into some of these updates and all, I'll just kind of note from the get-go, the periodic review is a very um, procedural and minor update and all, when we get into the changes, I think you'll you'll kind of see that it's pretty straightforward. Um, so I just wanted to, um, you know, start with why we are here, uh, the city is obligated under certain state laws to review and amend its regulations that pertain to shorelines of statewide significance. Um, so there is the Shoreline Management Act, it's RCW ninety dot fifty-eight, which requires that the city's shoreline master program, which is a document that the city um, has adopted, be reviewed and revised if needed on an eight-year schedule. Um, and jurisdictions are um, on varied schedules to complete this, this review, but the city of Clealum is, um, their uh, update is due June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, so we're coming up on that date in about a month or so, and as Lucy mentioned, we've been working on this for about a year or so. Um, the Shoreline Management Act was originally passed in nineteen seventy-one, and what it does is it manages and protects the state's shoreline resources by um, requiring consistent planning throughout the state, um, and allowing for reasonable and appropriate um, water-oriented and water-dependent uses. Um, and so it governs the use and development of those shorelines of the state, and its goal is really to prevent um, the inherent harm that may occur due to the uncoordinated piecemeal development of the state's shorelines. And so that's why um, the city of Clealum, like all of other cities and towns and counties that have shorelines um, or portions of shorelines that are um, deemed of statewide significance, have to develop a shoreline master program to uh, plan around them. Um, and so while it is state legislation to have this uh, in place, um, local governments are the ones that are required to carry it out, and they do that by adopting the shoreline uh, master program. Um, so uh, the shoreline master program, then it implements all of the requirements that are in the Shoreline Management Act, it establishes goals, policies, and regulations for shoreline use, protection, and development. Um, and the city of Clealum lasted a comprehensive update of its shoreline master program in two thousand twelve, um, and it was eventually uh, adopted in two thousand sixteen, um, but further amended in twenty nineteen, so um, the amendment that we are doing now is really um, a fairly minor amendment, because we're only um, trying to capture the last couple of years of where state law or guidance may have changed. Um, the shoreline jurisdiction that the Shoreline Management Act or Shoreline Master Program covers uh, is the area that um, extends from any major water bodies, um, two hundred feet landward from the ordinary high watermark. And so in the city of Clealum, this includes only the Clealum River and the Yakima River, but then also those upland areas that are two hundred feet upland of the ordinary high watermark. Um, so this is just a little graphic depiction of the the shoreline jurisdiction, which is that blue arrow, that entire area that includes the the water body as well as the two hundred feet uplands. Um, this, I want to note, um, uh, is not the setback, there is, there is often a shoreline setback or a buffer that is applied to these shorelines, and that whole two hundred feet is just where we regulate um, development and uh, ensure that it complies with the requirements in the shoreline uh, master program. Um, the shoreline master program uh, designates four different shoreline environments um, in the city of Clealum, and these are kind of like zoning for um, shorelines, and so these uh, classifications are um, reflective of what the local shoreline conditions are, um, but they uh, reflect both the ecological functions as well as what kind of existing development is in place, so they may allow for um, in some cases more restoration use, um, in other cases, they may allow for more um, intensive uh, commercial or industrial use, like a marina uh, or a port. Um, and as the Planning Commissioner mentioned, the shoreline jurisdiction in the city of Clealum is quite small, and you can see it to the west, um, the western portion of the city's limits, um, as well as in the southern portion of the city's limits, but the majority of this map, uh, what you're seeing is actually outside of the city's municipal limits. Um, so the purpose of the SMP periodic review is for the city to stay current with the changes in laws and rules that have occurred um, over the last uh, six or so years since the city's last uh, comprehensive update, um, remain consistent with any other city plans and regulations that may have changed, um, respond to change circumstances and new information, but I want to note specifically that the Department of Ecology who funds these updates does not provide funding for any additional scientific analysis of shoreline, so that's where this process deviates from the CAO, um, because the Department of Ecology makes this very prescriptive, um, and does not um, really uh, uh, allow for any additional uh, analysis, analysis of, say, a shoreline environment, whether or not it's appropriate, or um, updating any of the development regulations that may affect um, the uh, the functions of the shoreline. Um, and as uh, sort of uh, led into, the Department of Ecology actually provides a periodic review checklist of what must be reviewed and amended, um, and uh, it's very straightforward, gives you year by year what um, changes in state law or guidance have accrued, and then you respond to them, and um, uh, in this uh, periodic review cycle, most of these changes are very procedural in nature. Um, but I will note that uh, any of these uh, amendments will not apply retroactively, they would only apply to future development, so there would not be a requirement that existing development along the shoreline be brought into conformance. Um, so some of the things that you will see in your packet that are changing, the cost threshold for what constitutes a substantial development, which requires a permit under the shoreline ma- uh, master program, um, was increased to seven thousand forty-seven, so that was just an increase that was directly related to inflation and um, the consumer uh, increases in the Consumer Price Index. Um, this was uh, likewise applied to the cost threshold that is in place for when a shoreline substantial development permit is triggered by um, installing a dock. Um, and so that cost increased, um, just due to inflation. And then the definition of development, um, the Department of Ecology clarified this development to exclude if there was just oh, solely dismantling or removal of structures on the site, and there was no other development, um, so that would not be considered um, development for the purposes of obtaining a permit in the shoreline um, jurisdiction. Um, some exceptions to local review were added um, in the Shoreline Management Act, and what that means is that they do not require a permit from the city or review, and so these are um, remedial actions that uh, may be required due to a consent decree, um, improvements to boatyards that are required under the NPDS um, permit system, and wash dot facility maintenance, so those were the three specific items, and they are um, not subject to local review or permitting. Um, and then there was a clarification to uh, forest practices that was made, um, such that if there is only timber cutting, um, they do not, are they are not considered a development, and again, do not require permitting. And then an exemption was added, um, so if uh, one is retrofitting a structure um, purely to comply with the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act, um, they are not subject to obtaining a permit, but they do still need to meet all of the requirements of the shoreline management, so that's what, it differs a little bit from the exceptions. And then, uh, I think the last uh, change that you'll see in your packet is that the legislature added some special permitting procedures, um, specifically, they added a target review time for wash dot projects of ninety days, um, and then an option where they can allow, um, the city may allow construction after they've filed for their shoreline permit, um, and then um, subject to them getting a shoreline permit. Um, so, yeah, again, the changes are very minor. Um, and the Planning Commission did on March sixteenth hold the required public hearing and considered and deliberated and recommended four to zero to approve, um, uh, recommended approval for to zero to the City Council of the proposed amendments to the state's shoreline master program. So just some next steps, um, you can adopt the amendments to the city's SMP, we would encourage you to do that. Um, the city is required, as mentioned, to do that by honor before June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, and uh, the city will have to submit this uh, locally adopted SMP to the Department of Ecology for final approval. Um, I wanted to note that the Department of Ecology has already issued an initial determination that the city's SMP um, as amended, complies with all of the applicable. that the city's SMP, as amended, complies with all of the applicable laws and rules and the shoreline management act. So that should be a very, a fairly straightforward process. But the Department of Ecology does have 45 days to issue that approval once the city submits the SMP for final approval. And then last, the SMP will be effective 14 days after the Department of Ecology issues final approval. So this is again, different than your normal development regulations where the city has, you know, full control. And when when you pass an ordinance, it's, you know, effective five days or so afterwards. The SMP will only be effective after the Department of Ecology actually approves it. So just to note that. And with that, I am available to answer any questions you might have about the shoreline master program.
Well, I have, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but a kind of a question Lucy might be able to fill in. Because it is happening along the shorelines. It seems as though Wash Dot is going to put a temporary bridge in alongside the freeway at the crossing at South Clonway to get across the river. Does that, is there, there was exempt exemptions for Wash Dot? Is how does this affect the work that they're going to do? Are you aware of that project?
I, I don't know if Brittany is aware of it, but I'm certainly aware of it. And and I actually used to get the permits for Wash Dot for projects like that. And I believe it would be an exemption. The shoreline where that bridge would be going in is highly developed with the BNSF rail lines, the South Clealum Way and the existing DOT right of way. And so we'd have to look back, but I would believe that that would be an exemption or a shoreline permit. Either way, Wash Dot can handle it. They they have the special specialists there to get those permits from the various jurisdictions. That project has a lot of complications. You know, not the least, the least of which is probably the shoreline issue. They have multiple jurisdictions all crisscrossing in one place where they have to get their permissions from, so. More to come on that project.
Okay, well, I just, you know, it's a project that was happening on the shorelines and involved Washington. There might be some enlightening aspect.
There shouldn't be any complications for the DOT.
Where is this temporary bridge going to be put?
You know, the freeway overpass. So they have to put a temporary bridge to divert the traffic. And it's going to go on the north side of the freeway. It's going to be quite a project.
Well, you're talking about the overpass over I-90?
You know where the freeway overpass is, the east and westbound lanes of I-90?
Yes.
You go under those at South Clonway.
Oh, sure, sure. Okay.
Yeah, no, over there. And so they're going, they're going to rebuild those two bridges, you might say. They're going to rebuild them. So they have to have an extra temporary bridge to divert the traffic so they can close one bridge.
We're talking a huge potential impact to our city.
And that's, you know, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, but I, obviously, a lot of people are aware of that.
First I've heard of it.
Yeah, well, I'm letting everybody know. Well, since we're talking about shorelines and that's a shoreline project, I thought I'd bring it up. See what, you know, we could learn.
Well, this, this, this is a facility where the freeway crosses Hartveig-Boward. Let's go around. And the BNSF. And then it becomes South Clonway and an old bridge over the river. So it's the overpasses on I-90 that they're talking about.
Yes, rebuilt. And they went up in the 60s, in 60s.
Sure. Oh, yeah, yeah. I know, more power to them, but.
Well, that's, I just thought I'd see how it connected.
Any, any contemplation of work on, on the bridge over the river? I know.
Is there any action that's being suggested at this point? Or are we tabling it?
Oh, we're, we're, we're. Why are we, it doesn't seem like this is a big, why are we?
So yeah, I apologize for changing your agenda. And in my mind, this, this one, everyone needs to be aware of. I thought that was a great presentation. The planning commission spent a lot of time talking about shoreline. And, and I, I believe that the shoreline ordinance, they're going to place that in your hands to do with as you choose. I don't think there's any more to do on that one. And then I would move on, but I'm going to do it in order now.
Okay, guys.
That would, it would be, Lucy, anything to add to that?
Only that, the, exactly what Brittany and, and yourself commissioner have said, that the shoreline master program had very little changes and really nothing substantive from what we already had. So I would have, I would like to ask the question why it would need to be delayed, given that we have a deadline on this particular ordinance? The critical areas ordinance, we don't, we don't have the same urgency, sense of urgency and deadline. And it does have much more content and much more substantive change. This shoreline master program does not, as Brittany said, it has already been preliminarily approved by the Department of Ecology. It's gone through all of the motions and it would be, it'd be great if we could could move that along, but I understand, you know, that's, that's the wishes of the council. So I'm just a little bit confused about why we would delay the shoreline master program.
Because I wanted to be sure that we covered all the bases, that we had a clear idea of what was going on. And so that we had the opportunity to do these questions. So I do, we do, there are, you're right, the critical areas is a lot more. There's a lot more involved there. There's things to be done there. But I just wanted to be sure that we, we were, everybody is aware of what we're doing.
Okay.
I want to give us enough time to do that, that's all.
Great. So we have, we are here with the consultants and myself and Commissioner Burnt. If any of the council has questions on the shoreline master program?
We've also been given the actual full details, like they, you know, all the, all the documentation for review. We've had, I believe, what in my estimation is ample time. The, the planning commission has done a very proficient job. And again, it's been pre-screened by DOE, which is So with that, I would move that we adopt ordinance number 1607, amending CMC 18.02.
A second.
I'd rather wait till the next meeting.
There's going to
I understand, yeah.
And a second. So now we have questions, the motion was to approve ordinance at 1607. You know, amending the shoreline master program. So questions on the motion?
I'm intimidated by a double, double prided, three quarters inch document. And what, there's just three little spots where we touch it, it's like. And yet the, probably the biggest impact one is an exemption. So I guess I would, I would rather spend more time to understand it better.
I guess I would just say we have more than two weeks to look at this document. The planning commission does a great job of doing our homework. I think our planning commission is currently one of the, at least I admit for a long time, but it seems like they are very well qualified in terms of what the commissioners do. And they seem to be very well versed on government as well, some of them work in some of these industries. And I just think that we've had sufficient time to look at this. There's very few changes. And since deadline is June 30th, and our next meeting wouldn't be till June 14th. It seems like not giving a lot of time to have it passed and get transferred.
Other, John.
I don't have a problem with, I guess, going ahead and doing this tonight. But I think for the future, you know, something like this, I was told that we were not going to be voting on these two ordinances tonight. And I'm not saying I'm not prepared, but in the future, if we're going to vote on something, vote on it. If we're not going to vote on it, not vote on it, but don't say, hey, we're not going to vote on it. Then get here and say, oh, I think we can go ahead and vote on it.
I'm sorry about that, but it is ultimately, you know, council decision.
Yeah, but, but yeah, I guess if we're, I guess I'm just saying that if we're going to vote on it, let's vote on it, not say, hey, we're not going.
Well, okay, Mike, there were questions. Sure that they were seen with it. Certainly see the value in opening it up to continuing it to a future deliberations. But I think, again, we've had the amount of time, it was only introduced at this meeting as we were, as we were going forward after the agenda was already approved, that there was the possibility of not voting on these. And again, the one point of contention that with, with, with your consideration, I don't believe is something that the city has power to deal with. Maybe Lucy could help me out on that point of exempting the WSDOT. Do we have the authority to not make that material change that hasn't been suggested? Or is DOE, if we say we were to strike that change, is DOE going to come after us and say, you know, there's other WAC or et cetera that has to be followed and part of that is exempting?
Hi, in response to you, Councilman, I'm not seeing anything that would prevent the DOT from doing their project.
No, what I'm saying, part of the thing, part of the point of contention was that we're, maybe I'm not understanding this right or I'm not understanding Mr. Ratliff's objection. His objection is that part of the change is that we would no longer be subjecting the WSDOT to permitting under the changes that are being proposed. And what I'm saying is, I don't think that that's a point that we're allowed to make. Like, I think we have, I think, my, my understanding is we have to exempt WSDOT from the permanent process. Is that correct?
I would defer this to Brittany, but I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting a re-see over.
Go ahead, Brittany.
Where would I start?
Yeah, I think that it might help to, and I can find the full definition of what the facility maintenance is. But I will say from my own experience that the Wash Dot State Route 167 project, I've been involved in the shoreline permitting in the cities of Bife and Milton. Then they also have some permitting in Pierce County as well that they're doing. And they are absolutely subject to the shoreline master program. They have to obtain either shoreline substantial development permits or shoreline conditional use permits, depending on the scope of the project and where it's located. So I think that the facility maintenance that they're talking about accepting here is like, say, for existing facilities where maybe they're just doing some pavement maintenance or something. Not an entirely new bridge. And certainly, if, if it is a new bridge, it's probably going to, the shoreline master program will probably be the least of their concerns. They'll probably end up doing, you know, JARPA, they'll have NEPA permitting. It'll, it'll be, they'll be very involved permitting that'll go into it. And the city's piece will probably be a smaller portion of that.
Right. They are, normal maintenance and repair for the DOT is generally exempted from a lot of these types of laws. Normal maintenance and repair being to those existing facilities. Creating a whole new temporary bridge is not generally considered under normal maintenance or repair. I did have some experience working with this law at the state level and presenting to them and being approved. I, I worked on the exemption for shorelines for DOT at the state level before I came to the city. And it was only for normal maintenance or repair. It was not for any new development, which this temporary bridge is actually new development. Even though it's temporary and it'll go away, it is much more over and above just ditching or, or replacing a run of guard rail. So the DOT would not be exempted by this change in our SMP. They would have to do all of their regular permitting that they would normally do, which is not an undue burden to their, their office or their department in any way, shape or form. They've been doing these temporary bridges up and down I-90 in Kititas County and they've got, they've got that process down. So.
Okay. So all those in favor? Oh, I think she had to, okay, we'll wait for a little bit for her.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah. You can hear us, right? Okay, I say, so all those in favor with adopting ordinance 1607, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So there's five, four and two against, so the ordinance is passed.
Which two were against? We have to.
Mickey Holtz and Ken Brad. Or eight. That's right. That's, it's important they can't, Captain can't, made a year, everything we can here. So, okay, so now let's go to the, the critical areas. And that, that was the one that we discussed.
Yeah, and again, I apologize, the, the one we just went through is, is quite a bit less complicated than the one we're going to talk about now. Lucy, would, would the consultants want to speak to that or should I say?
I didn't catch the last few words, but was, well, let's just do it in the same order that we did last time for the shoreline master program. All, a quick introduction is that we have been working on this. The shoreline master program was under the Department of Ecology's guidance and strict processing. Whereas, and under the shoreline mass management act. The critical areas ordinance is under the growth management act and it is not under the, while the, while the Department of Ecology will review it and has reviewed it, they are not guiding our process nor dictating our timelines. What is dictating our timeline is the growth management act. And this is one of the development regulations that needed to follow the, the adoption of our comprehensive plan in 2019. And when I saw the opportunity to get a grant from the Department of Ecology to pay for the consultant's work to update the shoreline master program, I asked the council for the rest of the funding to get the critical areas ordinance done at the same time because they really do need to work together, although they are very separate and under different state laws. So we have done the due diligence to get this to you. And I know that Brittany will probably go over the extent to which that happened, including two public hearings on it at the planning commission level due to substantive comments. This, although it's a shorter document, there is much more substantive change. And so I feel very confident that this is, although full of information and we may need to continue the conversation, it, I feel confident that it's all there and that we will get your questions answered sooner or later. So Commissioner Burnt, I'll hand it over to you for the recognition.
To add to that is, again, when I came on, this conversation was underway. Really, the two ordinances run parallel and our goal was to not, to complement, not complicate where they might interface. They don't interface in a lot of places, but Councilman Ratliff may have found one very interesting. So the, we held a public hearing and we got substantive comments. We kept the hearing open. Those comments were reviewed for this, keeping that comment period open, discuss the changes through the to that, and the planning commission voted on what you hear. So Lucy, I would turn that to them.
Thank you. And so I would like to hand it over to Josh Kabutza from AHBL to give us a presentation on what we have, where we, where we came from and where we landed right now.
Thank you, Lucy, and our mayor and the council, we're here to talk about this. Critical areas ordinance update, my name's Josh Kabutza of the HBL, I'm a land use planner. I've done critical area grants updates in both Western and Eastern Washington. I also helped with current land use planning and long range planning and SMP updates. I also have a background, a background in wetland and stream ecology. So as a city in Kiddes County, Clallam is required to plan under the Growth Management Act. The Growth Management Act requires that the city review its development regulations every eight years and make amendments necessary to ensure compliance. What, the WAC specifically says that counties and cities must include the best available science from developing policies and development regulations to protect the functions and values of critical areas and must give special consideration to conservation or protection measures necessary to preserve or enhance the drama of fisheries. The city complies with the GMA by enacting critical areas ordinance and updating it in accordance with the best available science. So best available science means current scientific information used in the process to designate, protect, or restore critical areas that is derived from a valid scientific process defined by the WAC. The best available science, we'll often say best, is a complete, a compilation of published studies, technical reports, GIS mapping, aerial photography of critical areas within the city. If best available science report has been prepared to ensure that the city's CAO is based on the most current, accurate and complete science and technical information. Also like to note that various state agencies, Department of Ecology, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, both review and comment on the BAS to make sure that follows their guidelines. The BAS report was authored by her environmental consultants. Her employees, environmental science and critical area experts who have completed numerous Washington best available science reports. These reports allow communities to comply with state law and make policy planning decisions for protecting the environment. So what is critical areas protection and critical area ordinances provides for the protection of sensitive areas for the benefit of the environment as well as protection of private property. So in the city of Clallam, critical areas include wetlands, up for recharge areas, fish and wildlife habitats, regarding flooded areas and geologically hazard areas. So wetlands are, we're going to talk first, wetlands are defined by, defined in accordance with state law and federal law, which requires the use of federal wetland delineation manual. Wetland boundaries are delineated by a qualified professional based on the presence of specific soils and plant types. Ecology then requires that wetlands are rated based on Ecology Eastern Washington State Wetland Rating System. And they require that buffers are provided to protect wet. The city's current wetland buffers are not compliant with the ecology's best available science as it stands now. The BAS report recommends updating the wetland buffers to be compliant with the ecology standards. So on there, on your right is the 2010 or the existing wetland buffers. Consistent with ecology and the BAS, the proposed wetland buffers are determined by wetland category and habitat score. Ecology allows for a reduction of wetland buffers if mitigation measures are incorporated. Those mitigation measures include directing lights away from wetlands and how runoff is handled. If the city determines that the mitigation measures have been incorporated, then the following buffers apply, the ones on your right. If the city determines that mitigation measures are not incorporated, then the following wetlands apply. Now, I just will quickly go over a couple of them, so you can see the differences. So category four wetland under the current code is 40 feet of wetland buffer. If they provide mitigation measures, the category for wetland continues to be a 40 foot wetland buffer. If they do not provide a mitigation measure, it will jump up to 50. That category two, based on total score and the current code, has a 75 foot wetland buffer. The, if, under the proposed buffers with mitigation measures, it would range from 75 to 150 based on a habitat score. And then without mitig, mitigation measures, it would range from 100 to 200. And that's all based on Department of Ecology's guidance and best available science. Next section is going to be the fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, which are defined as areas which are, which endangered, threatened and sensitive species have primary association. So those have our habitats, the specials of local importance, natural occurring ponds under 20 acres, and there are submerged aquatic beds that provide fish and wildlife habitat, waters of the state, and state natural air preserves and natural resource conservation areas. The existing code does not require buffers for non-shoreline streams within the city and is not compliant with existing Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife best available science. The BAS report was completed in 2000, October 2020, with the best available science at the time, and recommend that stream buffers be incorporated based on the existing guidelines. These are the guidelines provided in the, I'm sorry, the stream buffers for the, in the BAS report. On February 16th, 2021, the WDFW, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, requested that the city incorporate the new WDFW management recommendations that was published in December of 2020. So as a reminder, the BAS report was completed in October 2020. Then Fish and Wildlife released new guidance in December 2020. The new guidance would require stream buffers to be calculated based on site potential tree height, which is the average maximum height of the tallest dominant trees at 200 years or more for a given site class. The average height of dominant trees in Washington range from 100 feet to 240 feet. Additionally, the new guidance would not allow stream buffers to be reduced less than 100 feet. The stream buffers would also be applied from the edge of the channel migration zone rather than ordinary higher watermark. So in essence, if you followed the new guidelines, you'd go from a current of zero feet buffer on some of the city streams to having at a minimum 100 and maybe even up to 240, depending on that whole site potential tree height. On March 16th, 2021, the planning commission requested that HBL investigate how to incorporate the WDFW comments into the city Clallam critical area ordinance. On March 17th, 2021, Lucy Temple, the city, HBL and her environmental staff met to discuss the comments. HBL, in consultation with her environmental, prepared this WFW's critical area ordinance stream buffer response memo that provided two options for the city. Option one was to move forward with the original CAO that was presented to the planning commission. Option two was to compromise and adopt the Fish and Wildlife Site Potential Tree Height buffer, buffers for Crystal Creek, while retaining the standard buffer for all other non-fish bearing trains. The main purpose of that was that Crystal Creek would see the, could see the most future development, while the city already is, is pretty much fully developed. And so by putting, if you did put 100 foot buffer on all city streams, you would have a lot of properties that suddenly become non-conforming uses or buffers. On May 5th, 2021, the planning commission recommended the city council adopt, the adoption of option two.
Excuse me?
Yes.
On the critical areas here, and it does not show Crystal Creek as being a critical area. And then it shows virtually all of the bullfrog property to be a habitat conservation area.
It's, I am unsure which map you're looking at.
This one.
Oh.
Which one is that, Ken, when we are seeing you?
Yeah.
If you're here, you can tell a lot about it, I tell you that.
Figure six, Fish and Wildlife habitat conservation area.
Oh, is it in the BAS?
BAS, you tell me.
Those are the maps that we got on our email that were sent around as part of the packet, but not part of the ordinance.
Oh, okay, so that's why we need to.
True law, when you're, when you're working on it. Well, I don't think I have something I can bet on, I'll tell you that.
Let's let him go, let's, let's.
No, we have, we're having a couple of issues here. One is that when Miss, when Councilman Ratliff speaks, it is very difficult to understand. And I think that has. And then the other thing is, there was, there were maps that the council requested at the last meeting that were not part of these updates, we're not working on the maps. Those are maps that are adopted with the comprehensive plan. And I provided those to the, to the council ahead of the meeting. And then Kathy, they were sent out several times to the, the council, but they're not in this adoption package. So that's why there might be a little bit of confusion which map. Because it's probably one of the maps that was not included in the, I mean, it's not included in this document.
We specifically asked for maps.
Yes, sir, I understand. And we gave you the maps that the city has, that they were already developed. But developing new maps as part of the critical areas ordinance or shoreline master program was not part of the scope for the consultants. And so new maps were not generated in the last couple of weeks. I provided you the maps we already have. And that's why there was some confusion about which maps we were talking about. So I just wanted to bring everybody, including our consultants, who are kind of in the dark, up to speed with which maps you were referring to.
Doesn't look like there's any maps with this stuff.
None in the world.
No, because they're already developed with the city. And also, when I provided the maps to the city council, I referenced the fact that that data is publicly available to anybody who needs it in term, and we were just copying the public data and putting it on one, in one place in those maps. So they're available on the assessor's website, the Fish and Wildlife Department and many other sources. And that was included with the email that I sent to council. So with that, I am kind of over here on my other screen, pulling up the comprehensive plan webpage of the city council or the city of Clallam and, and pulling up the, the land use element that has the maps so that I can actually look at the ones that you're speaking about. The, and I'll speak to cr, critical areas questions on Crystal Creek. Crystal Creek is a critical area, is not a shoreline of the state, so it is regulated under the critical areas ordinance. And so, so it is applicable under the, the critical areas ordinance. And I'm going to look, when I get to the map, I'm going to look at what you're talking about as far as the bullfrog flats area being, I think you said mostly critical area?
Wildland habitat conservation area.
Habitat conservation area, yes, much of Bullfrog Flats is actually managed open space for that reason, from what I understand. So let me, is there a specific question that I'd be able to answer?
I've, I've never, you know, we've, we've done ELSs and, and many years ago, decades ago now, committed to development there, and now it's listed as a habitat conservation area. And that's a, that's a pretty big change from what we've had in the past.
Well, it's actually covered under the, the environmental impact statement for the Bullfrog Flats in 2002 and in the 2021 update. So this is not new information, this is all old information. Like I said, we did not develop new maps, these are old data sets from Fish and Wildlife that are still in place.
And this is the first time I've seen bullfrog flats as a habitat conservation.
Well, like I said, these, the figure six is in reference to the 2019 comprehensive plan that city council adopted for the city as part of our GMA requirement, and the maps were included in that document. And they're available online.
Okay, well, let him continue, let's keep.
Yeah, let's go, let's keep going, Josh, thank you.
Yeah, next area is the critical offer recharge areas, which are those areas which are with a critical recharging effect on offers used for portable water as defined by the WAC. The BAS, which is the best available science report, when I refer to the BAS, I want to make sure that's clear, that's the, the best available science report that was done by Herrera. Found that while the code was compliant with the best available science, the critical area ordinance language should still be updated, the clarity. The proposed CEO amendments provided language to clarify the entire city is presumed to be within a Cara unless determined by site specifics, scientific study, added language for classification and requirements of cars and new development standards. For going flooded areas, our areas subject to at least 1% or greater chance of flooding in any given year or within areas is subject to flooding due to high groundwater. Feeling flooded areas are areas that are defined also according to flood insurance rate maps. These maps are currently being, are in the process of being updated by FEMA. The BAS report recommendations led to proposed updates to various flood definitions and clarifying language for development within floodways. This would be specifically when FEMA updates their firm maps, that's the map that will be used going forward. Geological hazardous areas are erosion hazardous, landslide hazardous, seismic hazardous, mine hazardous, volcanic hazardous. Structures and improvements in geological hazard areas are required to minimize alteration to slopes, not result in risk to neighboring properties and to minimize impurious services. The existing CAO does not provide any standard setbacks or buffers from geological hazardous, hazardous areas, which is inconsistent with the best available science. The BAS report recommends that buffers should be considered for known landslide and steep slope hazards. So on March 16th, 2021 and May 4th, 2021, the planning commission concerned delivered a recommended order zero approval to the city council of the proposed amendments to the city critical areas ordinance. The next steps, the city is currently out of compliance with the GMA due to not having completed the eight-year periodic review of its development regulations and adopting amendments to its critical areas where it's consistent with the best available science. The city should, at its earliest convenience, adopt amendments to the CAO in order to avoid financial consequences, such as not being eligible to receive funds from the Public Work Trust Fund or Centennial Clean Water Fund or other state grants and loans. Without a completed eight-year periodic review, the city may also be vulnerable to a petition for review to the growth management hearings for. And that is the presentation, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions, so we're here for you.
One additional piece to that is after we deliberated and you can see the best available science, that's in the, the city's website, if you go to planning commission, drop down to critical areas best available sciences is listed, it's a link on your computer, so you can do that. This has been forwarded, Lucy, I got an email this afternoon about the Department of Commerce, you want to speak to that?
Yes, I will, the mayor asked me this morning about, about what we had heard from the Department of Commerce in response to our providing these documents to the department for review. And the way this works is that they are provided to the Department of Commerce with a notice of intent to adopt and a 60-day review period. Those were submitted in March 15th, and so they were completed, the 60 days reviews were completed May 13th, I believe, and we do not get any formal documentation from the Department of Commerce on such reviews. It doesn't happen, except for potentially your actual comprehensive plan amendment. So we did get something in 2019, but we were not anticipating any documentation from this one. So we are free and clear, but just to double check, to cross all the Ts and dot the Is, I did reach out to Scott Cookda from the Department of Commerce, and I do have a response from him in writing via email confirming my, confirming what I, what I just stated, that we, we're not expecting anything from them. We're feeling, creating clear to adopt the critical areas ordinance, just like we are with the shoreline master program. So we're good there.
So to follow up on that, I couldn't imagine providing a document to a state agency with a 60-day review and not receiving a response. If that's their standard.
Yeah.
You not hear from them, you are good to go. I have issued that, because I have been waiting to, I figured that the Department of Commerce everything we've talked about and look at what it meant to the city of Clallam and its economics. But what Lucy, I think, is training me, if she possibly can. And she said this would only really kind of play in a comprehensive plan, which we are now working on future land use zoning and ultimately probably the comprehensive plan. So the Department of Commerce was an issue I carried, and it's not an issue. And I, I believe, Lucy, there's nothing else to be said.
Yeah, I think that Josh explained the, the, basically the nuts and bolts of how we developed. Yeah, I think that um Josh explained the the basically the nuts and bolts of how we developed um the. How we developed the BAS, it was a comparison within with the twenty ten um critical areas ordinance that was pretty out of compliance um on many, many um points. And Herrera, who um who is the sub consultant to HBL on this contract. They um, you know, they specialize in this and they have done these, you know, statewide for multiple jurisdictions. And they are the best, they are the best available scientists on the job, which is why we chose them to do this on our behalf. Um, I did review the BAS very thoroughly and provided very in-depth comments. Brittany's nodding her head remembering all my comments and a lot of questions and um, you know, questions on the behalf of the city of Clayellum and I work for the city and the city community. And so that's my goal when I'm looking at these is is um, what is in the best interest of our community and do we have to do everything that this document is suggesting? And really, we did because there was, it was so outdated when compared to state law requirements. And so we have now brought that document up to current standard, Josh just relayed all of the reasons why we have to adopt it by law and what we are um. Kind of threatening or not threatening, but kind of uh what we're gonna have to face if we don't pass it um within a time of a timely manner. Which is um, we are currently out of compliance with GMA, not that there have an iron fist coming down, but it's just one of the things that we need to check off to make sure that we are fully. Um, capable of getting additional grant funding and um and able to participate in certain programs at the state level. So um, you know, with that, our our ears are open, ready for your questions and discussion.
So yeah, the first question I have is that are not question, comment that that. The disclaimer says that the city, our city attorney hasn't hasn't reviewed.
She has um to a degree, we sent, we sent um and and by the way, these were also reviewed and very heavily commented on by our um. Our consultant planner Greg Dorn, we worked with him on um pages of comments and addressed all of those comments. We've addressed all the comments from WDFW, the Department of Ecology, the Department of Health and others. And um, so we did receive quite a lot of comments from various agencies. And um, our city attorney reviewed the comment response. Forms that AHBL prepared for both the shoreline master program and the critical areas ordinance where it says, here was the comment. Here was the issue and here's how it was addressed in this document. And I um a- and I also sent some of those on to our city engineer Ben Anan. Neither the city attorney nor Ben Anan were contracted to spend um, you know, additional funding to review the documents from top to bottom. Um, because it wasn't in our budget, but if that's something the city council wants us to do, we can certainly um get an um an estimate from. From them about how much additional cost that would be, but um, they did review the comment response log and didn't see any issues with it.
Well, um, I wanna get, I wanna confirm that from our attorney because on page three it says. Be evaluated and I don't believe, I wanna, I wanna confirm that. The other thing I'm a little bit concerned about is on page twenty five. It says uh Crystal Creek is a type F stream, which, you know, has all these conditions, but it also says and so is Steiner Canyon, the town ditch. The town ditch goes all through town, all through town. And it crosses all over the place and that we need to make, we have to. Decide find out that if the town ditch is gonna be subject to the type of stream requirements, which it says. Crystal Creek is a type F stream throughout its length in the city, in the city and so is Steiner Canyon, the town ditch. So we need to, you know, make sure that's verified. The town ditch is an irrigation, who does that, who does that? Uh, who does, I don't know who did it, that's what this says, it just, I don't know.
That is straight from the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And it has been field verified, there are fish in town ditch. And it's lower reach and there are no screens, so it is fish habitat considered by the state of Washington and regulated by the state of Washington.
There is screens, there is a screen on the town ditch at the.
That is the younger ditch, younger has a screen, a fish screen, it's an irrigation ditch, the town ditch or um, you know, the canyon creek. It does not have any fish screens and I I have the documentation from fish and wildlife and they have field verified photographs and mapping that shows where the fish were found.
Honorable mayor, I I did the same thing. Okay, and I went and looked in the uh town ditch. Enters the Akama River upstream of the younger ditch.
Yes.
Uh, okay, alright.
Well, hey, we're we're putting this jargon out here and we still don't have maps to show where these ditches are and what's designated. Now, we asked for maps and okay, we got maps, but you just told us they're not valid.
If they weren't valid.
Talking. I don't wanna vote for anything unless I see what it is on the maps. Planly what we have, okay, well, it's all written here, uh, but. I defy you to intelligently interpret what what is here to what's on the ground. As far as Crystal Creek, um. Professionally, I was probably the last one to get a hydraulic permit on Crystal Creek. And um.
Is that a lion's throat?
Yes, and it uh. It was labeled by Department of Fish and Wildlife as a channel ditch, I mean, it was. It was put in its place where it's at, and the railroad great.
Yes.
Okay, well, there's no putting it back to anything natural. It does dry up every summer, I know there's fish in it at times. Um. But most of it dries up every summer and uh, you know. Return best of air, the science is getting a worse and worse reputation, it's not. It's not science, okay, and I I don't buy it, quite frankly. So I wanna see where maps. Not just shoreline, but where what ones are, what the habitat conservation areas are, what that means those areas. Uh, any of them is a critical aquifer recharge area, including all of First Street. Uh, what does that mean? Most certainly on the north side is hazardous slope, I mean, all this. I gotta see it on maps, uh.
Okay.
I I don't see good information that I can evaluate and make a judgment on.
So he's saying he wants to be able to to compare what is written here.
Sure, um. O- offhand, Brittany or Josh, do you have any um ideas about? Um, the the scope change that would be involved in developing field. Verified GIS mapping for all the critical areas?
I asked for that.
I think that's what.
Has enough intelligence on hand to put this stuff on a map if it's already been done.
Right, and I and and sorry.
It should have already been done.
Sir, we had a scope um prepared and approved by the city council and it did not include. Updating to the maps because we didn't have that and we didn't have that in the proposal or in the budget.
You said that.
I'm very sorry, that was not included in the city council.
We have some other questions.
So is it, is it helpful to direct them to um, I think figure four dash one in the BAS because that does show the map streams and I can see that those come from a GIS layer that is prepared. By the Department of Natural Resources and they're the ones that um. Type the streams, so they're the ones that determine whether or not it's a type F stream, meaning that it's fish bearing or a type NP or type S stream, meaning that's not fish bearing and maybe it's ephemeral and it's it's only um. Intermittently um carrying water throughout the year, but um, within that map, you can at least see where the streams are mapped and it doesn't tell you the typing of them. Um, but that is all, it is information that um is maintained on both the Kitata County um compass three point oh. Uh, mapping platform and then as well as the DNR water typing um GIS maps and um. The CEO really is to define what those areas are and how um you delineate them um and what the buffers are that the city must regulate, but. Um, actually site locating them generally that is done um on a site by site basis. Uh, and you use these maps as a reference document just to say that you think that there might be a critical area there, but. Um, you always have to go out and site locate it and determine whether or not the information that is contained in these maps is accurate.
Right, and that's why I said the field verified, because if we were going to make maps that were different than all of the public data that's currently available that Brittany just pointed to. Then we would have to include field verification of those critical areas and that is a substantial um cost to the city. When we have the field verified information from these public agencies who are who are slated with regulating them to a certain extent. I can certainly share my screen, I do have that BAS map up on my screen if you'd like to see it, um, I can provide that to you.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. That's another question. Uh, I have a quick non-map related item. Uh, in regards to Crystal Creek, Josh was speaking about eventually adopting the. Number one or number two and number two creates a buffer of a hundred feet that would impact our some of our residents. How does that impact our residents if you change their buffer from where it's currently at to a hundred feet and now the buffer is in there on their property or their land or or what have you? How does that impact our our citizens or does it?
Well, um, Lucy, do you wanna first touch on how the city was regulating Crystal Creek? Forehand.
We have not been adequately, according to state law, regulating Crystal Creek appropriately because there was no, there was no buffer. In the critical areas ordinance for Crystal Creek or any of other water bodies other than our shoreline water bodies. Except for the fact that Crystal Creek is a regulated flood plain under FEMA regulations. And so that was basically the the bigger hammer on any regulation with Crystal Creek. Um, we have to by law put a buffer on Crystal Creek of some kind and Fish and Wildlife's new guidance. Um, is recommending the site potential tree height and the channel migration zone as the preferred option. And the city pushed back on that because they wanted to have all of the water bodies within the ci- city of Clayellum. Um, have to be regulated under the site potential tree height rather than like a twenty-five to fifty foot buffer. And the planning commission and myself and and after a meeting with AHBL and Herrera, we suggested to not do that because that is. It's kind of um, in our opinion, a vast overkill of um regulate regulatory reach into people's properties. And a good example would be town ditch on um Second Street in between Floral and Short Avenue, which is on the southern portion of the Price Chopper or Drew Brew property. Imagine having a hundred foot buffer or a hundred and fifty foot buffer there, that'd take you all the way up to the county shop. So a lot of these areas are already so heavily developed and and as the mayor said, you know, some of these these streams or or what we see as ditches. That have become regulatory, um, they they wind in between people's houses, sometimes under them. Um, so we just didn't think that that was something that anybody would be able to live with. Crystal Creek is the only bit of habitat left in the ci- in the in the downtown city limits. That that is of any value and um, we can have differing opinions on that, but if you if you if you dig a pit on the side of the freeway to build a fifth freeway and it becomes a wetland, it's a wetland. And if you put in a ditch um a hundred years ago and it becomes fish bearing or it has um habitat value, it has habitat value. And the city is not the expert, um, I'm not the expert on determining that, we we take our guidance from the state and and the feds on on that. And we and we have to by laws, regulatory body adhere to those higher level standards, so you know. Uh, we did and we fought for what we what what staff and the consultants who were working on this all over the state and. The planning commission put together what the group felt was the most prudent and um minimal requirements that we could um put forth in good conscience.
But I would specifically add also that the any new regulations um. Or the buffer does increase onto property that it doesn't mean something has to be torn down, it's not retroactively enacted. It's all, it's only future items.
Not gonna impact our our citizens.
Right, and.
All pre-existing would continue to be pre-existing.
And.
And hang on, uh, Stephen, Stephen had his stand up a long time ago, then we'll get you, for sure, okay?
I can I add one more quick item on that is that we also looked at the um Fish and Wildlife site potential tree height and we, oh, everyone's cut out in my. Okay, sorry, everyone looks frozen for a moment, I just, I was just talking to myself. Um, the site potential tree height map in Crystal Creek, uh, the the. The site potential tree height at that location was the the lowest amount of impact to what appeared to be residential properties from the aerial view. And so we try to make it also like visually look at these properties to make sure they're not encompassing all of them. If it didn't make sense at all, we try to make it as reasonable as possible.
That that helps, we have to start answering questions from the general public about these types of things, that's appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, so to answer or to comment on a couple of other things, yeah, the inability of us to make exposed factor laws. So any any of these type of things, anytime something's rezoned, anytime something's uh, you know, a new ordinance, you have non-informing uses, it just means. It was their grandfather name, you're good, um, but as far as I I do think we need to be careful um when we when we. After the fact, lay on staff. A certain standard of simply saying, we want maps, this is the standard we want them to rise to. You, uh, I think uh, Mr. Ratcliffe, when he uh, when he calls out, I want a map and I want it like this, he thinks of it simply. Because often engineers can give you a rough picture on a map where city planners can't take that um impressionistic view of the city. And you know, hand draw things, they have to do things to a standard. And so they have to have that standard set for them, I think the request is somewhat ambiguous, so I can understand. His frustration because he wants to be able to see it visually and also understand the frustration of planning staff, et cetera, saying. Okay, drawing a map can mean one thing to a five-year-old, it can mean a very different thing to, you know, these people that we pay lots of money per hour. Um, so I think it is an unreasonable request to just throw out, I want the map and I want it to do this, we can always say we want it to do that. But that's not really a request, that's just numerating a personal desire. Um, I'm comfortable with the five days that I've had reading this, this, even though it is fifteen pages. It seems like it's well notated and, you know, it explains what they did, why they did it. Um, I I feel like we could deliberate on the finer points without a map, but if there's a map or if we're putting on the uh staff. That we need a map, I think we need to very narrowly define the dimensions of this map. Um, and then see if it is something where like she said, we have to allocate resources to it, we can't just. Demand something now allocating resources, and if we have to, then we have to say to the people, oh, I want that. And I think that would be followed by a motion. But hang on, okay, there was another question, we have, let's let's have some conversation.
So we've been talking about pre-existing. Property and and how this critical areas plan affects it, how does it affect the areas that are under development? How does it affect the Bullfrog, Bullfrog Flats area forty seven north, how does it affect city heights? This is something that's gonna be pressed on.
It's all habitat conservation area now.
Like it's gonna, like to me, it looks like it's gonna have that conversation to wipe out the plants that forty seven north.
Well, I I guess another comment I made about, well, forty seven north, I don't know what that, but I think that's city heights, you know, they're working on. A twelve-year-old development agreement that we can't really apply this to now that I know of. But I think this is the more likely.
Well, yeah, the sugar. Well, yeah, there's something they haven't covered at all that always comes up in development. There's your habitat count, which tells you it's going to be 50 feet, 75 feet, or they even went up to 200 feet. You can't do there. So it's, there's a lot that's incomplete there that comes up when you visually are doing something. Like doing a development. We shouldn't put a name on these other developments. We're really talking about future developments here that are going to come in this area. And to go back here, I live out in Clealum, in South Clealum, and there's a creek in the back of my yard there. And half the people have taken, colored up and grained it there. I have a bridge across it. But there are fish in it, but it's not on any of the maps. The salamago is right by your church, the back of your church that has fish in it. So, but to me, we're looking at what we're setting up for the future. Instead of going back and say, this is wrong over here, this is wrong over there. You know, you're just, that's the way I looked at it. You know, so we're heading from today on. Because we can go back and change there and we can put this thing that's up in South Clealum. We could tear up everyone's backyard and everything else, but if they were building there today. I think that's what we're trying to develop. That's my thoughts.
I guess I, so we've had this for two weeks, but we got this on the seventh, I believe. I've read it a couple of times and asked questions out of scientists or an engineer or anything. So a lot of this is a little bit like foreign language to me. But, you know, it seems like we've hired some really smart people to give us guidance on this, consultants at the planning commission who've spent a lot of time on it. It seems like a lot of these things are just completely out of compliance with state law. Getting us there is what, how I read it. And even then, given recommendations to about really strict standards, they have opted for a middle ground. So I guess I don't know seeing maps or anything else, but that would give me any more information than leaving and people like experts saying. Well, I guess my question is for, is, are you uncomfortable with this kind of kind of question? Recommendation that says, boys, you bet this is good to go. I was on the planning commission. I respected the work and the homework and all the time that gets put in. And I don't know that I have anything else to give. And so I'm ready to vote on this. I'm not hearing a showstopping thing.
It would have been nice to have visuals because we did everything, not just on paper. We did it on Zoom. That's the first time I've seen some of this stuff. So what I believe we voted on is the best alternative to the city. Is it going to have surprises in it? Is it potentially going to require relooking at it? No, it's not like that.
You're, here's the meaningful feedback and you think your team is going on this really loud feedback.
One of the things that I was really concerned about is the the amount of critical aquifer recharge areas within the city. And that's something we ought to maybe have a vote against. But I'm as comfortable as I could get with it and I voted yes.
So, okay, so I can go back to that.
Mayor's talking here.
Who was talking?
You.
Yeah, okay, no. So maybe if they explain, chapter 18.01, critical areas protection. It says there, 18.01.030, designation and mapping of critical areas. Does it mean that there's just going to be a mapping, verbal mapping or?
That's not a map.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You know, it does say mapping of the designation and mapping of critical areas.
That's where it's got to be a part of what we presented.
So I'm, you know, I'm kind of bringing up the map because again, that's all. Says that, I don't know. Does that mean something else?
Well, maybe we should ask the consultant.
Yes, okay.
Because it's a computer world we're living in, if there are layers that can be withdrawn without a whole lot of work, is there a possibility, Lucy, consultants are developing some, some level of accuracy?
The public cannot hear us. I don't think they can hear anything you can say.
We can kind of hear you.
Well, welcome to come down here. Well, I don't think we should pay a price that we can't have in the same room.
Rob, are you there?
Can we get shut off or do we fall out in there or something?
Turned out.
Just like get smart.
We're having a technology glitch.
Yeah, we're having a slow hugging.
But we'll ask consultants about that, you know, about the map.
What page? What page are we on?
This is on page one of 50. Chapter 18.01, it's in the beginning of the planning of critical areas ordinance proposed amendment. And it's page one of 50. I don't know that there's any other. It's asked, it's kind of the very beginning of the, of the chapter. And it's like, it's got the section. It's in the, it's in the.
Page 18.67.
Oh, he says, you know, he says, my.
Mayor.
Having critical areas. And this is chapter 18 and that's section 18.01.030. I mean, that's in, that's in sections.
Yes. Mayor, can I respond to that? That is in the table of contents for the existing ordinance and what was presented to you is a redlined version of the existing ordinance. And so we didn't, it wasn't started from scratch. And so that part of the table of contents was not modified. But if you look at page nine of 50, 01.030, which is that section within the code. It talks about how it, designation and mapping of critical areas. They updated that heading because within the document, the heading wasn't consistent with the table of contents. And then it says, it talks about under section C1, under wetlands designation, the critical areas mapping. And it talks about the different data layers that is involved in the mapping to be used as a guide for the city. So the National Wetland Inventory Map, the Soil Surveys and any Washington Department of Natural Resources Wetlands maps are used as a guide for the city, project applicants and project owners. It does not say the city has to develop the maps. It says that those maps are already available by people who do it and have the resources to develop it and are tasked to regulate them on the state or federal level. And so we are being really smart actually by using the maps that have already been created for our use. Instead of reinventing the wheel and spending our own money to have biologists and other people go out and field verify. The maps are available.
Okay, so I guess the question, you know, that's fine, but you know, it should be that they can at least have a picture, you think? I don't know.
It's not that article of data layers in the EIS.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, I mean, okay. Yeah, it's out there, but we don't, I mean, that's a question I'm not going to belabor whatever.
Lucy, can I just mention, so the critical area mapping that the city has right now, it uses the same data that the BAS mapping utilized, which is why we did not recommend that the city update that these maps. But then we also wanted to supplement that with referencing any of the NWI wetland mapping that ecology has or Department of Natural Resources, any of the stream mapping that they have. Because, you know, these maps are just a snapshot in time, what you published in your comprehensive plan. But that delineation, that requirement to designate it in that certain way that your ordinance says, that always applies. So if a wetland becomes created, as Lucy said, or a ditch becomes fish bearing, it still has to meet the requirements of the critical areas ordinance, even if it's not shown in the map. So you could certainly update the maps if there were new information. But when we reviewed it, it was the same data layers that was available to us to download the NWI wetlands, the DNR stream typing, the Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas. That one's a little bit different because they've started masking some of that layer, those layers. So I'm not really sure what that entire area that's covering bullfrog is. But I will note that Crystal Creek is shown on there as a fish and wild. It's just really hard to see because it's like a light yellow color and it just doesn't, doesn't pop very well. But the data, the data is all, it's fairly consistent with what is out there because there hasn't been any, you know, site locating of these features. But again, people, people need to use the process that's outlined in the ordinance to identify these layers or these features on their site. They just can use these as a reference or go by whether or not they might have critical areas.
Right.
Right. I would specifically add that NWI mapping is particularly bad and to be off by a decade.
So mapping those out does not do anything for the city other than just be able to look at them and say, there might be something there.
But there could be a lot of other areas that are not mapped in that same with that.
Yes, and the maps are used as a guide.
Mickey, Mickey wants to make a comment, okay?
To me, we spend 35 minutes where people on the console are asking for something and you come back and tell us why we don't know it. I don't think they're there to tell us what we need and what we don't need to look at. And I don't think that we try to tell each other what we need to look at. And, you know, and the statement that it's on a map and going on there. I've blocked land for 50 years now on different developments. And you go to develop a piece of property and they come in and inspect it. I'm not talking about anything that's under development now, but it would be 30 years ago, 50 years ago, 10 years ago. And all of a sudden, they see fish in there or they see this or this, and that becomes a wildlife spot right then and there, never known to man or woman before. We developed the property, had no idea it was on the property when we bought it. No lied to us when we came there, but it was suddenly found when we cleared it and then it's on a map. And that is why we need new maps occasionally because things get found. We're not talking about things that 20 years ago to me, like I said. We're talking about now in the future because that's how everything got on your map to start with. That's my thought.
So I, you know, this is really.
That is getting ridiculous, this conversation.
So this is really a guideline on how you deal with these kinds of things. Stephen, you might just.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't believe that they've been telling us what we need or what we don't need. But I think that they have wisely cued us in as to why we don't want to hard fix or attach a map to the ordinance. Because once we do, then we're bound to that map. We're bound to constantly update that map. And so having, having it tied to maps that we don't have control of, but that basically govern us anyways, I think is a very prudent move. And we can certainly have a distrust of state entities and federal entities that change these maps. But that distrust isn't going to guide their curation of the maps and it's not going to change the binding that they have to us and tying to the grants and et cetera, if we don't follow their guidelines. And, you know, that's where I would respond to that.
I'm going to have to agree with my colleague here. I am a restaurateur. I am not a specialist in anything else.
You mean you're a spotter?
But I do, I do have to trust that the experts I've used in my businesses have guided me the right direction. And what we've done is we've brought in experts to give us direction. A map isn't going to change my opinion on whether we should go ahead and pass this ordinance. It's something that has to be done regardless of what we're going to look on the map. It's not going to change the outcome. You know, my concerns were, how does a 100-foot buffer impact some of our, our people or future developments? As Councilwoman Williams brought up. But the other day, I feel like this is something I could vote on without any further finger pointing or map making.
Is that a motion? So wait, hang on, let, let, can I make one more statement?
Let's point it out, but we have, we have something here that's showing the entire bullfrog flats now be official wildlife habitat conservation area. And so we're going to vote that in here if we vote for this. It's very unclear as to what that means. Does that condemn the property? I don't know. It does, it does put something on it, but we don't know what it is. Okay, and so on with these others. Geologically hazardous areas, critical aquifer recharge areas. What does it mean? We don't know.
We're voting on stuff we don't know because we have not been given information. That being, you know, you're putting, you're putting layers of impacts on property that are owned by people. And then you're saying, it doesn't need to be on the map. Well, that's, that's sort of like saying when you buy a piece of property, you don't need a map to show where it is. It's just, it's just there. I mean, that's nonsense. We have to have maps of these things if we know what we're voting on. As it is, we don't know. Period. We should not vote on this. We don't have enough.
Well, okay, let's, let's decide, you know, do we want to?
I think one thing that keeps dangling.
You want to?
I think one piece of information that may help us that keeps dangling is, is the bullfrog flats area. There is a light brown overlay over that map. And I would like to know from Lucy, what exactly, how exactly does it tie, if it ties the hands of the developers potentially? I don't think that it does, but I'd like to have some.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm asking if we can allow it to have at least a minute on the floor to address that.
So as per a statement that I made earlier and what has been brought up in the presentations, this document is, as just any ordinance that we have, it applies to future development. It does not apply to things that we have already done, those things, those properties that are already developed would be legally non-conforming, but they would not have to make any retroactive changes. The Bullfrog Flats Development Agreement, as you all know, finalized a final supplemental environmental impact statement that took over a year to develop. And that was finalized just recently, a couple of weeks ago. This document does not change that, does not change the development agreement, that does not change that EIS. It certainly doesn't change the city heights EIS that we're operating under. So these big developments, the way that any development in the city would be potentially impacted is by future development permits that might have to adhere to these codes. However, we don't have, we, we look at the critical areas ordinance. And by the way, each of those critical areas, including the Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas, the Critical Aquifer Recharge Areas, et cetera, are all very well defined in the ordinance of what they are and what that means and how to regulate them. So we have the guidance here in front of you. And that is, and that, and that has been presented to you. And so what happens with any of the permits for anything, for any development, even those that do have EISs, they have to go through the permitting process. And that's when local, state and federal code come into play. It does not mean that bullfrog flats can't develop in any way, shape or form. It does not mean that. A habitat conservation area is identified. A habitat conservation area is identifying that there is habitat there, it's a huge forest. It's obvious that there's habitat there, it's an elk herd um, range. If you walk out there, that's, you see, you see animals and plant life, it's habitat, that whole area is. As is apparently my driveway for bears, you know, we have habitat all over Clealum because we're in the wilderness. And so these regulations don't preclude development, they just make you look at it and make sure that we check all the, you know, check all the boxes. Also, something to point out is that most environmental laws are procedural laws, they are not absolute. If it's there, you can't do anything, they're procedural. So the State Environmental Policy Act and the Critical Areas Ordinance, they don't absolutely prevent development in any way. They just say, these are the guidance, if you want to do this type of development, you may have to mitigate. And that is very clear to the developers that we're working with on any of these large developments. They, they realize that if they're within a buffer, if they're gonna do a stream crossing, if they're gonna take out a wetland, that there's corresponding mitigation, and that's what this code allows us to see clearly and meet those state minimums. And, and, and the state minimums are non-negotiable unless we want to be out of compliance with GMA. So I hope that answered some of that, I know there were a lot of questions nested in there.
That's, that's all right, I think it was a good discussion, uh, you know, it makes it pretty clear that uh, these are guidelines for future development. They don't affect what, you know, what is existing, and uh, you know, and that's all I gotta say, so I don't know what's the council's up.
Okay. Stephen has a motion out here.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, sorry, no, there's, there's, no.
Motion retailed until next week. There's, Lucy already said, there's not a rush.
Okay, um, is there a second for that? Okay, stay, we'll have it on the agenda again, it's all right. This, this, it says critical, right, it says critical, so this is critical uh, in a lot of ways, so. Okay, uh, let's, let's do some more study on this subject, and we'll, we'll see if we can satisfy.
May I be seated?
Gary.
It's not eleven o'clock.
Hey, you can talk tomorrow.
Okay, sure you can. Um, how about a committee reports?
Just one, it doesn't matter, but uh, we finally got the iPads to the money.
Oh, excellent.
The IT.
Okay, uh, any other committee reports, anything people have to bring up?
Listen to a gentleman.
Second. Oh, come on. Okay, meeting's adjourned.
So I'll, I'll start coming along.